Please stand for the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as you can see, Mary Zeez is under the weather today, so I am here, but if the clerk could call the roll.
Council President Steinhebel?
Here.
Council Reese Camp is absent. Counselor Dykstra?
Here.
Counsel Savage is absent. Counselor Nasser?
Here.
Counselor Ulfers?
Here.
Thank you. Onto the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Good.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next on the list is public comment, and first I have, thank you for your help with that, Marcellus Angelford.
Hello, everybody. I see that the storm drain plan didn't wind up on the agenda for this meeting, but I have reviewed that on my own and have been in touch with Ron Whitlatch about it quite a bit, and had a few comments that I wanted to share with you guys. I think the most significant part about that is the new proposed billing. So, previous, well, I guess currently, the storm drain fees are allocated on a per property or per parcel basis. The proposed new billing would evaluate the impervious area on the properties, and then bill based off of percentage of impervious area. The idea behind that being that impervious area contributes to flooding and drainage problems, et cetera. So those, the properties with the greatest impervious area should then be the ones that would pay the most, and those with the least would pay the least, obviously, which makes sense. It's a big departure from the current system. As I was discussing with Ron and evaluating some of their proposals, trying to understand it, residential properties would all be billed at the same rate irrespective of their impervious area, just because there are so many tiny little pieces scattered throughout the city that it was considered easier to take an average of them and bill all the residential parcels based off of that. One comment I'd like to propose to that is if all of the residential parcels are all being billed basically the same as though it were a hookup fee, and the utility model is kind of what's being used for the storm drain assessment, like you're hooking up to city storm drain utility services, which I can understand, is to add a proviso in there to account for the number of dwelling units that are going to be on a property, on a residential property. The reason for that is with increased dwelling units, family units, you're going to have increased traffic, and in the event of an emergency, flooding or whatever, you're going to have that many more people that you're going to have to evacuate. And so whatever the flat rate fee that winds up coming out for residential properties, I feel that that should be allocated on a per dwelling unit basis for residential properties. So, food for fun for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. And that plan, I'm not sure when it's coming up for discussion, oh, next meeting? So you'll have another opportunity to, if more thoughts come to mind, to engage with us then as well. Okay, next I have...
Two question? Oh, well, he's already done. That's okay. Thanks.
Next I have Annette, Anna, Anna and Lisa, Anna?
Hello, I'm Anna Creel, and Annette, and Lisa. We're here to talk about the Lebanon skate park. We are in direct connection with that. We live right in the neighborhood, and there's been a lot of activity there that has been kind of concerning for us. Some of the, a certain group of kids hang out there almost every day. It's a little bitter now that school has started, but over the summer, we called police several times a week, at least once a week that we are calling to either have kids removed because of fighting or vandalism in the area. The skate park, it's really kind of sad. We went around and talked to neighbors today and heard from a lot of families in the area that they don't take their kids to the skate park anymore because of the kids that hang out there that kind of monopolize the equipment, and they don't feel safe there with the language and the topics of conversation that are going there, the trash that's left behind. The city workers come by every single morning and clean that park to make sure it's clean, because our house is right directly across the street from the skate park, and every time they leave trash, we have a storm in the wintertime. It gets blown up over the fence and right into our front yard, so we're out there picking up the trash anyway. So, and then last weekend, we had a really tense situation. A lot of the kids that are there hanging out within the skate park, not really skating, they're just hanging out at the tables, will egg, kids that have their little souped-up cars that come by will egg them on to squeal their tires down the road. There's burn marks all the way down Harrison Street, and it's really frustrating. We had a hit-and-run this last weekend. Lisa's car was, the car went around the corner, fishtailed in the gravel road on Fourth Street, and slammed into her truck.
My truck was parked in the yard in the grass, so if I'd have been in the yard or my dog, he'd have hit us. He went way.
So we're just wanting to come and just kind of, kind of give, I mean, just let you know that we are concerned. We don't want to see, I don't want to see the skate park shut down because it's a valuable resource for the city, for the families in Lebanon, and they do have a lot of outside groups that do come in and use the park. They'll bus kids in, and they'll stay there for a couple of hours and use the park, because it is a nice facility. And there's been a lot of nice work that, you know, I know that Mr. Breezy has really tried hard to make it a nice place for skaters to skate. You know, the police officers that we've come in contact with have always been very cordial and very encouraging for us to continue to call when there's problems, because they're over there drinking, smoking pot, and it's just really frustrating sometimes when we call dispatch and try to get a unit out there. There's a lot of questions of, you know, if there's a fight, is there weapons? I'm like, you know, it doesn't matter, they're kids, they're fighting, it's a tense situation. I'm afraid someone's going to get hurt, and we just would like to start coming up with maybe some things that we could do as a town to kind of help police that area and, you know, kind of have supervision there so that they know that there's an adult presence there, and that there's accountabilities. If they're drinking, then they need to get an MIP, because they're not over age to be drinking. And I think a little bit more, oh, what's the word I'm looking for? A little more accountability and consequences to their actions, so let them know, hey, you're vandalizing, that's not okay, there's restitution that needs to be paid for that equipment, because it doesn't belong to you. It belongs to the city, to everyone that lives in the city that uses that park. So, did you have anything else to add, Annette?
I did want to ask if we could get a copy of the local ordinance rules. I guess from what I've looked up, there are, I guess it falls under city laws and rules for skate parks, so I'm kind of wondering about that, because I guess there's liability if some, if one of the kids were to get hurt on our property. I have a lot of the kids that jumped my fence to get into the skate park, because my property is connected right onto the skate park. We've also had a kid had a paintball gun at the park, and they shot it towards our houses and our cars, came close to hitting it, I think, but they were out in the street and in our driveways. And then I've gone out there, we've taken pictures several times, picked up some of the garbage. The kids are, they go down to the gas station, and they'll get the big cups of drinks, and then somehow they're getting little bottles of alcohol and putting it in there. So they're drinking at the park. Couple of the kids have gotten sick and passed out and thrown up in the water fountain. They're smoking pot there, they're smoking cigarettes there. Fighting, a couple of years ago, at 2:00 in the morning, they had big spotlights down in the pools and were making bets on fighting. And then the driving has gotten really bad. They're pulling out in the parking lot, and they zoom down the road. I have witnessed two little kids almost getting hit. The neighbor down on the corner of Fourth and Olive, she's got little girls, and actually after this happened, they put up a fence, because their little girl almost got hit. A month ago, their garbage can got hit. The other day, her truck got hit, and they're flying around right in front of my house around that corner. And then our road on Fourth isn't paved, so he fishtailed, you know, when they're coming around the corner, and he just slammed right into the back of the truck.
That's one of their things that they're getting the kids to do, because they go off of the pavement onto the gravel, and all that gravel flies, and they can fishtail and do all this fun stuff. But not only do I have a huge, big dent, a big scrape in the back of my truck, I've got dings from just the gravel and other spots from my truck being parked, and I've only been here three weeks. It's kind of crazy.
So we're just wondering if we could maybe somehow problem-solve with the city and with the police, to just maybe get some supervision out there, you know, if we can do town volunteers. I know that the officer that I talked to on Thursday night after this happened, that, to contact Deila Johnson, so I was going to contact Deila to see if I could, if there's something that I could make an appointment with her and talk to her about some ideas that we could come up with.
I think that that would be very helpful for the situation. I know Deila has had a lot of success creating neighborhood watch programs too, and maybe this is, this sounds like an area that would be a really good place for one. And again, she's had successes in other areas as well too, so. I think, Chief Stevenson, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but do we have a camera too that is pointed into the skate park, similar to Ralston Park?
All the neighbors have cameras. We have whole video of when the guy hit my truck from the next-door neighbor, two houses down, because after her child was almost hit, they put up cameras.
Yeah, so first and foremost, I want to let you know that I share in your frustration. I know I've been out there a couple of different occasions on myself, and I've had to shut the skate park down, which is unfortunate, but I've actually had to do that. So this has been a topic of conversation with Deila and myself and Lieutenant Ryan Podwa. And I know there are some things in the works that we're trying to do and trying to get accomplished so we can provide more security for that area, cameras for us, because I know you guys, the neighboring, you guys have cameras, but we want to have cameras so we can look at this in our dispatch center and see what's going on there late at night. But I do, I do encourage you to please contact Deila and set up a meeting, because I would love to, for you guys to come in and us kind of brainstorm together what we can do. We do have certain programs available. Park Watch is one of them. Citizens can go out on park patrol. We set that up a few years ago, but that's something we can do, Neighborhood Watch, things of that nature. So yeah, I would encourage you, please contact her, set up a time when you guys can come in, we can talk and problem-solve, like you say. So, yeah.
I was wondering, for a while, well, for a while, we called the city, and the city would say they're not responsible, call the police, and we called the police, and they would tell us, we're not responsible, call the city. But it took a while to figure out who was even responsible. And I talked to the skate park committee, it doesn't seem like they're very involved with anything with the skate park. They're, they're...
Yeah, so there for a while, the skate park was not part of the city. We've since adopted the park. It is a city park, and so park rules and regulations apply. And so, yeah, the city of Lebanon is responsible for that. So when you guys are having issues, please contact us, like the officers have told you. I encourage you, encourage you, encourage you, please continue to call us. But more importantly, I think, is coming together, and so we can kind of bounce ideas off of one another of how we can make this more family-friendly environment like what's intended for, instead of a group of hoodlums that are hanging out there, because I agree with you. There's some hoodlums there, so.
And the groups change.
And my heart goes out to them, as being a former teacher.
Correct. Right, right.
And I do appreciate the signage that did go up, the new signage, because that helps me as a citizen to say, okay, here's the sign, no smoking, no vaping, no, you know, no alcohol. It's dark, park is closed, you need to go home.
Yeah, that was just recently put up, and that was kind of the first kind of phase of what we're trying to do there, so.
Just help, give a little bit of teeth to the neighbors.
It seems like those three picnic tables that are along the fence line, that's where the kids that aren't skating, that are just partying, are hanging out, and then everybody else is, they're destroying the picnic tables. They have knives and stuff. They've actually ripped off the bench seats and carving. They've tagged our fences, that happened. I've been there 12 years. And I was wondering, do, if, could a stop sign be put in the, on the corner, I think it's Third and Olive, and then mainly on Fourth and Harrison's, speed bump or speed bump sign, so we can get those kids to slow down?
I think, I think what would really, again, benefit is for us to come together. And so, I mean, we can, we can talk over a lot of these issues and kind of, like you said, brainstorm as a collective group to kind of, to find that solution to the problem here, because I'm with you 110%, it's extremely frustrating, and I'm with you. So please contact Deila, I'll let her know. She's probably watching right now, so, or she'll watch in the morning and go, okay, yeah, so.
All right, I'll send her an email.
Yes, please do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you three for coming. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, I have Ms. Regina. I am not going to attempt your last name this time. As someone whose last name is Steinhebel, I will probably get it wrong, and that's not nice, so. Welcome.
Hi, I'm just wanting to, I'm kind of doing something a little different, but I'm looking, I guess we call them houseless now instead of homeless. And I've been concerned, because I've gone to, I've talked to several employees at the different local businesses, like Walgreens, Rite Aid, Dollar Tree, Buy Mart, and even Safeway, and just there's a lot of theft going on, and they're saying that they don't have to, they don't, they're being told by their employers not to report it, because it's just not working. And so I'm concerned about that, when I hear that. And also, I have contacted the police, I've also contacted Nancy, Nancy's been wonderful, in taking the reports, and I have seen some good things happening, like the situation that was on Primrose, and there was like 15 carts. The next day I reported, I reported it, the next day I went by there, there were 15 carts there. There was a huge, they had gathered all the garbage up and got everything taken care of there. I also called and reported, well, quite a while ago, about the motorhome that was sitting on Grant Street. I also reported some situations. I walk a lot at Gil's Landing, and there's been several situations there too. And so when I talk to both the police and talk to you, then I also talk to the county, talk to the county, because there's some issues over there by Porter Park, and they're trying to address that too. And so I'm just concerned about it, because it just seems like in our parks and different places, you know, we want to feel safe, and we want to feel like we're able to use the parks, and we're able to do the different things, and yet we see this going on. We see, in the parks, we've seen people with carts with, full of garbage, and they're going through and whatever. And so I'm just concerned, what I was told by everybody and even the county, that the best thing we can do is to continually report, and the more that we report, and the community gets involved, the better it's going to be for all of us. So I, first of all, want to thank you that I can see that you are working on that, and I really appreciate that. I've seen the results. And so I want to know if there's anything else that we can do as a community to try to help with this situation.
I think reporting is, again, as Chief Stevenson or members of the Police Department have told you, I think that's definitely one of the best avenues for moving forward. We do have an ad hoc committee that is looking into some of this, and if I remember correctly, they are, aren't they meeting again sometime soon?
I think, we were trying to set a date today, I think October the 12th, 13th, somewhere in there.
Can we get that information to?
Was the date we were, was the date we were looking at, so.
So that committee in particular is looking at pulling up the information online, recommendations to the city council surrounding illegal camping that meets state law and are within guidelines that have been set through court decisions, and assist members of the Lebanon homeless community. So that, that committee will be making recommendations to this body, and hopefully we could put some policy in place to help alleviate some of this. But in the meantime, reporting is, I think, the best avenue moving forward. Chief Stevenson, am I speaking out of turn on this, or?
No, no, I agree, and I'll reiterate what you're saying or kind of repeat, but yeah, make sure you're calling us to let us know where the issues are so we can try to address them to the best of our ability. There are certain things that are in, we can and cannot do, so keep that in mind. But continue to contact us, contact your local legislative too, and let them know the, some issues or frustrations that you're having. Let them know what's going on as well.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Ms. Cassie Cruz.
Guys, hey, everybody. How are you guys doing? Can you hear me? Can you? Okay, am I good? Good. All right. I don't have a very long list, which is kind of nice for everybody. So just to let you guys know, we wrapped up the summer concert series. It went really, really well. We did have one issue, and if Jeremy was here, he probably would have been able to speak to it. He was actually reached out by a resident who had complained about some noise response to a generator. So we sadly were not able to really resolve the issue, I guess, fully to the resident's liking. And we ended up having sadly someone from that residence come over and unplug up one of the generators from our vendor. And so we kind of recognized, just so we can stay in with keeping people happy in the area, because we want to have, bring a summer concert series that, you know, promotes togetherness, that brings families together, and that isn't encumbersome to the neighbors around it. So we are looking at, for our next year, 2023, we're going to be moving concerts in the park to Academy Square. So then we can have that long space and talking with people like Deila. We wouldn't necessarily have any issues. Well, the person has remedied the situation by getting a newer generator, because they were just starting their business, and that kind of helped them, being a part of our concert series this last summer. But outside of that, you know, having that space there, that's right alongside, adjacent to Academy Square, at least space for vendors, it's really good as far as like, you know, people, as far as population can spread out. And then also, you won't, if anybody who's been to concerts in the park in the past, you won't have that setting sun glaring into your eyes when you're trying to watch a concert. So there is a lot of factors that end up benefiting us, but, so we're going to make that move. And so LDA is going to be doing kind of a community outreach effort, notifying the residents of that area just that the Free Family Concert will be heading to their area that they can enjoy, and to please join us. And of course, that lets them have an opportunity, if they have any concerns, they can ask us well before we end up moving the concert in next year. So that was really great. We wrapped that up. I'll have numbers for you guys, again, like people of attendance, but it was just really good. It was a lot of fun. I love the summer concert series. I love seeing people come out. I love seeing the kiddos dance and have fun with their families, so it was, it was a lot of fun. And then we also have, coming up next, and this, actually this weekend, this Friday, if you guys have not bought your tickets, I'm assuming everybody in this room is going to be there, but we have the Wine and Art Walk coming up, which is a fundraiser for the LDA, so we're super excited about that. And then we have also, which I'm excited for, is, as you guys know, we're part of the Oregon Main Street Network, and that allows us to really be able to leverage kind of like state resources to kind of help with our downtown. We were able to get that $200,000 grant to help with upper-level housing. And so what they're putting on for us is a concert for all of Oregon Main Street, you know, people as far as be for our boards, committees, the directors, managers, whatever you call yourself. So that's coming up. And LDA kind of let you guys know, we put ourselves in for a couple of awards. And I don't know if you guys remember, a few years back, Lebanon kind of swooped. The last time we had it, we had four awards, so we'll see what's going to happen, if we walk away with anything. So we're kind of excited about that. And also, we are also going to be presenting. So Downtown Association is partnering with the University of Oregon, because I believe you guys may remember, I shared about that, upper-level story housing, kind of seeing, getting inventory. And we're, so we're presenting on barriers to getting housing, upper-level housing into buildings, so we're co-presenting with them, so that should be really great. I have the work line, of course, talking slow, as you guys know I struggle with, but I think I'll do fine. And then we also have, coming up, for you guys, just to let you guys know, we have the Harry Potter First Friday. So we are literally turning everything Harry Potter, businesses, kind of blocks, will be designated to a house, which is great, because we have the Mercantile that has a lot of, if you've never been there, you can literally buy wands, Harry Potter wands, for your kiddos. And then you have BB's Bountiful, excuse me, Beauty's Bountiful book, that, you know, has a whole literature part of it too. So just be able to really utilize and our downtown businesses to kind of help bring in events just for what they already bring into our community. And of course, we also have our downtown trick-or-treat, which we're gearing up. I have already kind of the works to figure out what we need to do to close down the highway. I figured we're having such an influx because of us shutting down with COVID, it may be safer for us and better for us to shut down side streets and the highways. So those are kind of coming up, and you can expect that the 29th, so the second, sorry, excuse me, the Saturday before Halloween. And I did want to say really quickly, and just thank Frank and Chief Stevenson, excuse me, for just the response that we had in downtown. And I'm just speaking to September 11th, what we had to deal with. And as a downtown resident, and I know people who are stuck in their buildings, thank you. Thank you for the immediate response. Thank you for the communication that we could push out. Thank you for that. We went from going, from talking about being together and honoring our first responders, and then they had to enact themselves, and I just appreciate everything you guys do. So thank you, and thank you, guys. Oh, any questions? Never. Okay, bye.
Thank you, Cassie. Okay, going once, going twice on public comments. Anybody else? All right. We will move on into public hearings. So the public hearing for annexation, A2205, is now open at 6:28 PM. Your patience is appreciated as our city attorney goes through the required hearing procedures.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight's hearing will be pursuant to the quasi judicial hearing procedure set forth in ORS 197.763. At the commencement of the hearing, we will ask all counselors to announce any ex-party contact, conflicts of interest, or bias. If you have a question as to what that is, please let me know. We will start with the staff report. After the staff report, we allow questions of staff by the, by the council. We will then have public testimony in the format that has been provided in the notice of the action. The public testimony from audience members may provide oral or written testimony concerning any issue relevant to the hearing. Please recognize that all testimony or evidence must be directed towards the criteria that is described in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations. Please note the failure to raise an issue including constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, if any, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to those issues will preclude any appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba shall be raised not later than the close of the record at the following evidentiary hearing. Such issues shall be raised and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city council, decision makers, and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond. When you address the council, please identify yourself with your name and address prior to your testimony. We will go through the procedures, provided that the, the applicant will go first. We will then have anybody that is also here in favor. We will then have anybody in opposition to the annexation, and then rebuttal if necessary. With that, Madam President, you may continue with asking if there's any ex parte contact, bias, or, what's the other one? Conflict of interest.
Conflict, yes. Do any councilors wish to declare ex party contact, conflict, or bias? Is there anyone in the audience that objects to the notice that was sent in this case or to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case? Seeing none, will the Community Development Director please present the staff report?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the City Council. Before you tonight is an annexation request for a 19,600 square foot property on the east side of South 12th Street and north of Airport Road. The property is located within the urban growth boundary and has a comprehensive plan designation of residential mixed density. And it is adjacent to and adjoining city boundaries to the north of the property. The applicant is accepting of the initial zoning as identified within the comprehensive plan and the zoning code, which would be residential mixed density. And based off of the applicant accepting the initial zoning and not requesting a zone change, and the site being contiguous to city boundary, it is eligible for annexation. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on August 17th and found the application met all the decision criteria contained in the Lebanon Development Code and the annexation ordinance. And the decision criteria and the full Planning Commission record is included as part of the City Council agenda item, which was published, and has the details of each criteria that has been met. But generally speaking, if it's contiguous and the zoning is accepted, it is eligible for annexation. And so the recommendation from the Planning Commission is that the City Council approves the requested annexation of the property and the corresponding residential mixed density zoning of the property. That concludes my report. I'm available for questions.
Okay, any questions for, for our Community Development Director? Okay. At this time, I'll ask for the applicant's testimony, if he or she is in the audience. Okay, moving on. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this annexation? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? With that, then, the public hearing is hereby closed at 6:33 PM. All further discussion will be limited to the council and staff at this time. Counselors, any discussion again on this?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Okay. Will the city attorney please read the ordinance?
A bill for ordinance, annexing and zoning property following consent filed with the City Council by landowners in said area pursuant to ORS 222.120 and ORS 222.170, file A22-05, ordinance number 2986, ordinance bill number 2022-10.
We'll entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. That ends our public hearing, and we will now move on to the regular session. Next up is back at the podium, or back at the dais, whatever. It's Kelly Hardigan, Rural Economic Alliance update. Oh, nope. It's Alicia Rogers. It says on the agenda, by the way, it says Kelly, so.
It does. All right. And Kelly has told me I will be presenting this tonight, so you get me instead. Alicia Rogers, the Economic Development Catalyst. I'm going to share my screen so that you can see the website. And if it doesn't work, we have a backup option, and Erin will share the website, which looks like it's not working. Stop showing. Okay, perfect. Thank you. So the group that we're talking about tonight, which is the Rural Economic Alliance,
Got things done.
Was originally called the MVP Group, which was the Mid Valley Partners. It's eight cities in between Lynn and Benton Counties. Now we're at nine cities, because Tangent has joined the group. We received two grants to fully fund the project of rebranding to become the Rural Economic Alliance, or shortened to REAL, with the hopes of becoming an economic development organization for the region. The website and the new branding, the name and the logo, was kind of the launching point for this goal of expanding to a regional economic development organization. And the website's really the first tangible resource for current and future businesses for the area. So this is, I'm not going to go through the whole thing. I just wanted to highlight a couple of pages. The teaser press release for the launch of this website went out on Tuesday of this week. And then the actual full official launch will be on September 28th, is when it will be public. And if you are wanting to explore it further, there is a link in your council packets in the staff report. So this is just the homepage to show what cities are a part of it and the region that we are at and what we represent in between Lynn and Benton Counties, and highlighting that these are all rural cities. And then at the top of our site, I wanted to showcase that the REAL resources, I don't know if you see the theme going on here with everything being real. That page shows businesses, really easy website to navigate about starting a business, if you're expanding a business, or if you wanted to relocate to one of the rural communities, and what resources are out there to help, including funding and enterprise zones and other incentives that are out there as well, and the city resources. So it gives them a connection to all of the cities that are in that area as well. And then also, community is something that's huge to be able to show livability in the rural communities as well. So just talking about a major industries that are throughout the communities, and then other resources, including the chambers and the downtown associations. Like I said, if you would like to explore it further, there is a link in the packet. There is also going to be a Facebook page as well, or there is a Facebook page that is live for the Rural Economic Alliance. The next step in pursuing the goals of this organization is to form a new strategic action plan. And we're in the process of putting out an RFP for that to get some bids. And this, the funding for that, about 12,000 of that came from Lynn County to help the funding of the next stage of that organization. And REAL would ask that the council would be involved in that process, since we get into the strategic action part, and having stakeholders involved. That concludes this presentation. Are there any questions?
Few questions. I'm just going to ask them all at the same time.
Okay.
So in your words, how would we, the city of Lebanon, leverage this site and use this? How, how, how would it benefit us? That's number one. Number two, someone wanting to use this site, who would be looking for this kind of information? And then how would they find it if they were looking for this kind of information?
Wow, there's a lot of questions. So the idea behind this site is that it's kind of that one stop shop, so that if there were businesses that were looking, and maybe they're not necessarily looking specifically in Lebanon, but maybe in Lynn and Benton Counties in general, we could direct them to the site. And that could be anybody that talks to any of those cities that are involved, to be able to direct them to the site, hoping that the chambers and downtown associations can direct them to the site as well, so that they can explore not just Lebanon, but the surrounding communities as well. Yeah, right, sorry, just Lebanon. Lebanon is the largest community of the nine cities that are involved right now, so that's why.
Could you scroll down to this?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I know I can visit. I started to.
And this is, like I said, just the starting point. This was one of the action items from the first strategic plan, which was, you kind of have to have start, be starting somewhere. So starting with this website, getting that resource out there, showing them what other resources are available, not just to Lebanon, but throughout the, the region, and then grow it from there. Lynn County is one of a few counties in Oregon that don't have a directed economic development organization that helps oversee that, and larger cities tend to have those built within their city staff. So this is a way of kind of getting the rural voices together to be able to make more impactful changes, including if there ever needs to be any changes at the state level as well. More voices make it a better seat at the table, so that we can enact changes as well, because that is part of the goal of the group, too.
So once this is ready to go, we, the city, LDA, the chamber, have to know it exists and be trained to, to send someone who wants, you know, answers to this site, and hopefully they can get the answers that, is there any follow-up involved or anything like that? If, if we get, you know, some business calls and, and provide their information, is there any follow-up after that to make sure they're coming in Lebanon and nowhere else?
Yeah, anytime that somebody visits the site or contacts, I did the contact for Lebanon on there, so continuing to have that, that connection. Because as of right now, a lot of times when somebody's trying to start a business or relocate, they, they're not sure where to go. So this will kind of be that, that starting point, so that they know who to call and to try and get some of those, those questions answered. And we will work with all of our partners, including Chamber and Downtown Association.
Yeah, adjust a bit, but you know what I mean.
Yeah, to get this information out there. The teaser press release, it has been sent out to media as well. And so part of the launch plan, which we are using our consultant, Jay Ray, to kind of help us with that, is getting all of this information sent out, hopefully growing our Facebook page as well, so that people will start to recognize and refer to REAL as that economic development organization for our region.
Okay, thank you.
I hope I answered all your questions.
You did, actually.
Okay.
Questions from anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation tonight, and thank you for telling us a little more about it. Okay, next on the agenda, eliminated, eliminating parking on North Side of Division Way. Speaking of Della, I do think that Chief Stevenson's going to stand in for her tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, yeah, Della couldn't make it here tonight, so unfortunately you get to hear me talk even more tonight. So, so what I have here before you is a resolution to eliminate parking there on Division Way. And this is the section that's between the Lebanon Plaza and Wilco. What we had was several complaints from both businesses. Basically, it's, it was unsafe for semi trucks to get in and out to deliver packages and whatnot due to some, the one little strip there on the north side that people were parking in front of. We called Ron Whitlatch, who informed us this is a section of that road that is actually owned by the city. And so it just made sense to, the, the rest of the street there is a no parking area anyway. It's just this one little area. So what we, or what I had Della actually do is propose a resolution to put in a no parking section right there. And that is what is before you today. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
No, I would, I would support that. I go back there three times a week to pick up out of a grocery outlet. And it looks like people have just moved in and trying to get through there, especially when they've got the, the 18-wheelers coming through doing deliveries. I was stuck for 40 minutes when they had three big rigs that couldn't get out, and they had to jockey around.
Correct, yeah.
Because of that. So that's a good call.
Yeah.
It, it provides better security back there, too.
Yeah, security and safety, and ultimately, again, for people to be able to flow in and out of there freely as they should be.
Yeah.
I've, I've been back there a couple of times, but I can't remember. Are there marked parking spaces or just parking allowed?
No, there's, there's not. They just kind of pull over into a wide spot and then spread out.
So we don't have to really do any work there other than put no parking signs, correct?
Just signs.
Paint it yellow and signs.
Yellow?
Signs and someone to cruise it once in a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Or respond to complaints about it.
And give them the authority to do something about it.
Can't hear you.
Gives them the authority to do something about it as well.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, it gets pretty sporting, because you've got the back of all the stores, they all get deliveries. And then you've got the dope shop over there that everybody likes to go to, and then the back of Wilco and all that. There's, there's a lot of opportunities for inappropriate activities that, that will help, that will give them power to help do something with that.
Absolutely. Agreed.
Any more questions of staff? Questions, counselors? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, yes.
Trey reads it.
Trey can read the resolution.
Resolution number 2022-27, resolution eliminating street parking on North Side of Division Way within the city of Lebanon.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next up, mending Lebanon municipal code chapter 1.08.010 awards designated.
This is just sort of a housekeeping item. I was going through the code and noticed that it listed precinct numbers. And Lynn County recently updated the precinct numbers due to the redistricting, redistricting that occurred. It doesn't change the wards at all. So it's just updating the code so it's current with Lynn County.
Any questions? I know I asked that question as well. It does not change any of the lines. Doesn't change, it just updates the precincts, so. No questions? I will have the city attorney read the ordinance.
Ordinance bill number 2022-13, ordinance number 2989, a bill for an ordinance amending Lebanon municipal code chapter 1.08.010, wards designated.
Entertain a motion?
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving right along. Granting a non-exclusion franchise to Comcast of Oregon. Nancy Rivera.
Thank you. This is time for updating this 10-year franchise agreement. There are some changes in the language from the prior agreement. FCC, I'm sorry, the Federal Communications Commission has pretty tight control over what cable franchises can and can't do. And they have taken out the requirement for them to provide what's called PEG access, public education and government. That would give us a, like an education channel on cable TV. Those are no longer really being used anywhere. So there are some removals of language. They were amenable to adding in language. City asked to basically pay liquidated damages if they do not move their infrastructure for capital projects, where we have given them adequate notice to do so. This is a problem we're starting to have with some of the utilities, particularly where they don't have a local person present, where we're trying to move forward with the project and the power line is still sitting in the middle of a street. So they agreed that they would pay those liquidated damages that would be to our benefit, should they be slow. And so I recommend adopting the ordinance that would put in place a new 10-year agreement.
Was 10-year, was 10-year the previous agreement, too?
It, it was.
Any questions of Nancy?
I do have one question. So I noticed some of the other towns have a public access channel where folks could come on and watch the city council meetings. Do we have one of those?
So, no, we do not. Most of those included, for example, you, you would pay, as, as a customer, you would pay a PEG fee. So a dollar, $2 a month or something, that provided a public access channel, a government channel, an education channel. And the FCC has said, don't do that anymore. So we don't have a public access channel. We have a YouTube channel, and people can watch the meetings on YouTube, which also means you don't have to have Comcast in order to see our meetings. And, and frankly, it's to our, our people's benefit to not have to have Comcast. You either can have internet through a different provider, you can have it on your cell phone through your, your Wi-Fi access or through your cell's streaming access without having to go to Comcast to see this public meeting, so.
Yeah, I certainly don't deny the, the advantage of that. I was just wondering, because I see some other cities. I was just wondering, because I see some other cities have it, and it's through Comcast, and I was just wondering, is that part of their agreement, that there was an agreement there? You just told me they're paying for it, I didn't realize that we would have to pay for it.
It was part of the agreement, and the money that was paid through those fees paid for cameras, maybe paid for a TV studio, and if you go back 15 or so, 20 years ago, if you think about, I'm aging myself here, but Saturday Night Live, Wayne's World, was a public access TV show, and anybody could put any show on that they wanted to, but that required a studio and a big, you know, TV camera. And now you can do that and more here, put it on your own YouTube channel, and not have to go into a studio, not have to do anything, more power in editing on this device than there, than there was in a studio where you had to learn specialized equipment. So, those studios are not being used that much anymore and are being repurposed at this point, so, there you go.
And thank you, I now feel older because I remember that.
You're not the only one.
I did not say.
Thank you so much.
Make sure the minutes reflect Nancy had a Wayne's World reference at the meeting tonight.
I wasn't going to go there because it scared me.
Any other questions?
I was not involved.
But you smiled, you know.
Okay, do we have any more questions of, of Ms. Nancy?
You're, you're happy with the agreement the way it is?
Yes. Okay, with that, I'll have the city attorney read the ordinance.
She looked gleeful. Ordinance bill number 2022-12, ordinance number 2988, an ordinance of the city of Lebanon granting a franchise to Comcast of Oregon 2, Inc. for the construction and operation of a cable system.
Entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, Nancy again, granting a non-exclusive franchise to Lightspeed Networks, DBA LS Networks.
And this one is even shorter. This is actually for a five-year period, and the last one was for a five-year period with the option to extend, and the only change here is a suite number for the address for LS Networks, otherwise no change in the language of the agreement. So, I would ask you to adopt detached ordinance.
Questions, counsel?
Do, do, do we generate any income from this particular one?
Maybe a couple thousand dollars?
Per?
Not, per year. It's, it's not that much. I, I think as we look forward in time, particularly with federal dollars coming for broadband access, we're starting to see Al-Rika talking about coming to Lebanon, we're just starting to see Peak offering internet services in Lebanon, and starting to have conversations with them about creating similar franchise agreements to provide internet services here, so I think we'll start seeing more, but probably not quite what Comcast was providing in its heyday. We're seeing reduced revenues, for example, from Century Tel, because people just don't have landline phones anymore. And, and so it's just a change in the industry.
Is that above across all of them? You know, like when they come in, will it be the same type of, of funding in that, in that general area?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Uh, city attorney, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance bill number 2022-14, ordinance number 2990, a bill for an ordinance establishing a non-exclusive franchise for Lightspeed Networks, Inc., DBA LS Networks.
Okay, all entertain a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. I have a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So, we moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, amending Lebanon municipal code, chapter 2.30, Trees and Trails Advisory Committee. Nancy?
Thank you. So, as we noted when we came in and discussed the Cheetah Lake Parks grant that we got to do the work there, we don't have an advisory body currently in the city that would help us work on parks issues, and that is, as we go forward in time with that park development plan, we're going to want to make sure that we're touching base with some advice from, from an advisory board to, to counsel on some of the amenities we're looking at for that park. Following that, we're going to have Parks Master Plan update. So, looking at what we had in place, the Trees and Trails Advisory Committee seemed like a prime opportunity to add parks to their work. A lot of the trails, while not being in a park, connect one park to another park, those are start and stop places, and so we've proposed with the Trees and Trails Committee some changes in the ordinance language. Part of what we need to do is remove two staff members who are currently voting members of Trees and Trails Committee as a body advising the council. Staff needs to advise that body not be a voting member on that body. We also wanted to make clear that the council position there is a non-voting liaison position that is comparable to council role on other advisory bodies. And then we've added some parks' associated tasks to the work that, that the group is being asked to do, this is in red line strikeout format. The, the one issue that the Trees and Trails Advisory had a lot of discussion about was membership. The, the language in the past has been silent about whether or not members on the advisory board have to live in Lebanon. My original proposal was that you needed to be a member of, of the community of Lebanon. There are some of our bodies, so Planning Commission has certain members that can be outside of Lebanon, but within the UGB or a developer doing business in Lebanon. Others, like the Budget Committee, which is governed by state law, says you have to be an elector of Lebanon, not just live here, but a registered voter, for example. We're silent in, in the case of the, the current Trees and Trails Committee. I had put in language that I felt like you needed to be a, a resident of Lebanon, because most of the money you're talking about is property tax money paid by Lebanon residents for parks improvements. There was a lot of discussion. There are members of the Trees and Trails Committee currently who wanted to open that up to a member who lives in the UGB or who does, has a business in Lebanon but may live outside the city. And so ultimately, we all agreed that it's really council's advisory body, and council can decide whether you wish to have someone who lives, you know, all of the members live in Lebanon, or one or two members who live potentially in the UGB or have a business interest here. The language that is in the ordinance presented to you is the original language I put in, which is you have to be a resident of Lebanon. So, if you wanted to go in a different direction, you would need to amend that ordinance to say, "I think, you know, one member who lives in the UGB," or "one member who does business," or "two members who live in the UGB or do business," whatever this, this group would, would see fit to, to who you're seeking advice from. I would note, the, the trails in Lebanon are heavily used 24/7, and not just by residents, there are people who travel here to use trails daily, people from other communities, people who work here but live elsewhere who use those trails. So, I, I think that's part of what the Trees and Trails Committee discussion kind of revolved around was that, that people come here specifically for those amenities, and so I will open it up for you. Questions or?
There was some proposed language. Do you have that available?
Sure, it's actually in the staff report. "One member may serve on the advisory committee if they reside in the urban growth boundary or have a vested interest in the community by either working at a Lebanon business or owning a business or property in the city."
I was okay with that statement, so I'd, I'd like to propose that, too, for everybody to discuss. Can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. "One member may serve on the advisory committee if they reside in the urban growth boundary or have a vested interest in the community by either working at a Lebanon business or owning a business or property in the city."
So, basically what that means is the vested interest, even though they don't live here, and they can't, they can't elect here, they do have that interest by, I mean, just repeating what you just said, is by working here, being within the boundary, having some property or having a business, and given that our trails, as you said, is not just used by us, I think that outside insight and, and, you know, thoughts from someone who might not live here, I, I think it's, it's, it's okay. I'm all right with that. I actually think it should be part of it. Now, what is the total number of, of members?
It's six members plus a non-voting council member.
Okay, so one out of the six, not should be, but could be, from, from someone who fits that category.
I like the idea of allowing UGB and someone that owns a business or property, but not just because they work here. I think they have to have a vested interest to, that would be my call on it.
What, 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 how do you, what do you feel the difference would be, someone who works here versus not, you know, being, just works here?
Well, just, I just don't look at it like you have a vested interest just because you happen to work for a company that's located here. But if you're in the UGB or you own land or a business here and are employing people, sure you do.
The way I saw it...
That would be mine.
Yeah. The way I saw it is, it's not the most exciting and committee to begin with, so someone, I said, the way I saw it is, it's not the most exciting committee to, to be a part of, right? You really have to really be interested in our outdoors and our trails and our parks to even want to do that. So, that's why I felt it was okay, because, and the individual we're actually speaking of used to live here, and, and that's how the conversation started.
We're talking about an individual.
Yeah, there was. But I feel that whether it's that individual or not, if you feel passionate enough about, you know, taking a break on, during your lunch break and going to enjoy our trails and our parks as many people do, and given the fact that we have some of the nicest trails and parks in the state, I feel having the ability to have some of that outside input, I, I thought it was kind of important, and not just someone being here.
We're just going to agree to disagree on that one.
That's fine.
Counselor Dykstra, since we're small today, I want to make sure I hear from you as well.
I, I don't see any problem, really.
Okay.
Either way.
Okay. So, Counselor Nasr, you would need to make an amendment to this ordinance, am I correct? City Attorney?
Yes, and then they could make a proposed amendment to it. Is there, Nancy, is there any hurry to get this in place? We want to do it tonight, or do we want to?
I would love to.
Get direction and...
I can vote.
Well, get direction and, and bring back a final copy, or? We can easily make an amendment tonight if that's what the council wants to do.
And, and...
I just want you to know, you all sign that option.
I'm no, I'm in no hurry, because, because if the decision is, my concern is, I believe that individual who I would like to see, see stay on only works here, so if we were to vote that part out of it, she would lose her spot.
I, I would say, though, that the council, it's, it would be mayoral appointment, but the council could request that she be grandfathered until the end of her term.
That was the conversation, too.
That would be an, an alternative, but if, if you want to vote on an amendment and have me bring this back at the next meeting, that's not a problem.
I'm okay with that.
Assuming the mayor will be here for the next meeting, this is not something I'm in favor of. I would prefer that it stayed city of Lebanon taxpayers only on this commi, on this committee, but I recognize that I'm sitting in this chair today, so.
Well, that's the case.
I'm not voting, I'm just letting you know. At a time.
And, and my only concern is, is it is an ordinance, right? So, we usually, well, we certainly can make an amendment to an ordinance that's been brought before the council. It's, it's cleaner and easier to bring back a final ordinance if we have that direction, but I guess the, the catch here is that it might not be the same vote when we come back at the next council meeting, so there's no real clear idea of what's going to be the final result here. So, I will leave it up to council. You can, somebody can make a motion to amend, and we can vote on it tonight, or somebody can make a, a motion, I don't think you can make a motion to amend it, and it's not, it's not going to be binding on the next council meeting.
Well, then...
If we, if we vote, if we vote on it as, the language as is, can we come back and revisit that later and amend it?
Can we table it?
You, you guys can do it. Anybody can make a motion to table it till the next one, we can make a motion to pass it as is, or we can make a motion to amend, and then fi, and then a motion to approve as amended, if it is amended. Those are all options you can do.
I make a motion, we table it, next meeting.
And that will need a second.
Second.
The motion on the table is to table it, we have a second until, this would be for the next meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
With a 1-0 position. Okay, well, it will come back at the next meeting in October.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, last piece, city manager's report.
City manager's, I was hoping I'd be done before 7:00. So, just in...
I told mom 7:30, so you're...
Okay. Uh, just in the written report, I note that we have closed on the Ridgetop Real Estate parcel, which is on the east edge of Cheetah Lake Park, so that parcel is now included in the planning process that we're working on with a civil engineer, and will be where the trail goes around kind of the north and east edge of that parcel, linking back in to existing trails. A couple of meetings ago, Ms. Fry talked to you about her sidewalk, and that is underway with Public Works replacing it, and will have a lien on that property until she pays the costs. And then finally, in, in May, I notified you about the event of excess water being released from the dam and fouling our water intake. We did send a letter to the Army Corps billing them for $13,160.
I'm sure that went out well.
Well, interestingly enough, I, I had expected to hear nothing, and I did get a phone call from them, not, not willing to pay, but willing to discuss that apparently, informally in the past, they would have notified us, they have no formal mechanism in any location to notify anyone downstream when they are going to do a significant water release. And, and so the commitment that I got from them is, they will have discussion internally about what they ought to be doing for Lebanon, and I said, "To be clear, we are not the only ones who want to know when this happens, it's going to be everybody on every river." And they did very clearly and politely say, "They are a large, very slow-moving bureaucracy, and we just are going to have to be patient on whether or not they put something in place in a, in a more formal fashion." But I feel like, at least the person I talked to, understands the challenge that they created for us, and that they could potentially improve their interactions in a way that would be beneficial to other river users, so I count that as a win, and we'll see where it goes from there. And that's it for me for tonight.
Can you briefly also address the water billing issue we had this month?
Yes, so we have had a turnover in our billing staff, and in producing the bills this month, we missed a, a, a final posting that we needed to do, so the bills were late, and we missed clicking the switch that said, "Don't send the bills on closed accounts." And so we did send bills on closed accounts, and there was, that was, created a challenge for some people who got multiple bills for people long ago living in that location, and so we are working to address that. It, it has pointed up an error and a problem in our procedures, and we are working to clean that up, including looking at our level of write-offs, and whether, for example, we should send a final bill for a customer for $1.20. There is a cost benefit, and when you think about the amount of time it takes to produce that bill, mail that bill, collect the money, we're spending considerably more than $1.20 to collect that, so trying to do some, checking with similar communities to see what their write-off level is, how long they continue to try and collect past due amounts after someone has left, particularly when they have not left a forwarding address and we can't really find them. So, I, we will have changes in our procedures and get that corrected in the future, but it did cause quite a problem this month. Many, many lessons have been learned.
Teachable moment.
A very teachable moment.
Yes.
So, one of the questions, I think, that, because we all got the phone calls and, and videos and pictures and whatnot, so some, one of the question was, how can we get information when there is that kind of mistake out to the community a little faster instead of, of feeling, well, I guess a lot of people felt like, like the city was slow in getting... of feeling, well, I guess a lot of people felt like, like the city was slow in getting the information out on the mistake and, and what it was all about. Is there, is there anything we can do on that or are we still talking about that or?
There, there are things we can do. We, we could have posted something on our Facebook sooner and we did not get that posted up until, I think, Monday this week. I, I would say, I'm, I'm not sure that Facebook is a good tool because I don't think the vast majority of community residents are following us on Facebook.
According to what I saw on Facebook, oh yes, they were.
Oh, yes, they are.
Oh, yes.
Things have changed.
You, you were the topic of conversation-
Many times.
-many, many days.
The question is, was that on our Facebook page or was that on-
Oh, no, not on your Facebook.
Community, within community, like Lebanon Uncensored and that kind of stuff.
And Buzz.
It was out there. There, it's being used.
Okay.
I think if we let more people know that our Facebook, all they have to do is hit like and follow, they can get all this good information. So-
Okay.
All you people watching, go to our Facebook page.
Right? We should post it on our, our personal pages.
It was a large topic of conversation.
Not anymore, it's probably-
Okay. I, I personally don't do much with social media. I, I personally think that social media is-
A bane on our existence.
Yes, that is the term I usually use, mostly because it's so anonymous and people lob stuff without knowing and then it becomes fact. And I know, talking with Chief, the, the shooting that happened on Sunday, the social media gossip storm-
Yep.
-that was spinning out there, that was so, so, so wrong, ends up then taking your first responders off of their response, trying to address the social media brouhaha that if people had waited, they were sending out information on their Facebook and posting what they could, when they could. But I, I don't know if I can share what you told us this morning about your father. Can I share that?
Sure.
So the chief shared this morning that his dad called him and said, I heard you have been shot. It's, it's, it's a, are you, right, are you kidding me kind of a thing? But that takes time and attention away for our first responders from doing what they need to do. And, and that's a, a problem when people spin up and spin out of control. So.
Well, you can fix stupid, but it's going to hurt. And you still, it's still a tool that we need to use.
It is, because there's not-
Especially when I see a picture of, that one person posted of six envelopes of bills to one address.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's like, wow, better pay them.
Yes.
So in regards to the incident that happened on Sunday, so there was a post that went out about an active shooting and apparently that was wrong, correct? Active shooting was wrong because by definition it was wrong.
The definition of it was wrong.
By definition it was wrong. However, there was, and, and I believe there was an official that posted it. And then there was another posting about, wow, that official shouldn't have posted it because it was wrong information. I get that. But I was in a meeting last night with some of the folks here and one thing that came up that even though it may have been wrong and maybe could have been worded differently, the point is, it got to the community and this is an area that you need to stay away from at this moment. We may not have all the information yet, but just stay away. So even though maybe a good percentage still don't get, you know, don't do Facebook or don't have the computers or whatever, they don't have, or their phones, it is a tool that we have to learn to use, use better and use to our advantage in getting information out to the community, getting information out to those that do look at it, because we all look at it, obviously. And, you know, even we were in the dark about some of the things. So it's definitely a tool that we have to, and maybe some of the other ones as well, learn to use, learn to use better, maybe get someone and, and, and train them on how to use that and they become the individual that posts.
Well, I, I would say part of it, I, I did not know about this until the end of the day Friday. I mean, literally it was like 4:55.
I understand, yeah.
And, and because I don't monitor the buzz, I did not know about the postings on the buzz until late Monday, when somebody said, you ought to see what's out on the buzz. So, so some of that is, is my fault for not knowing.
Not at all. Not at all.
But what people were saying out there to be able to respond to.
I think one thing we take, we take away from the two, the two pieces that we're talking about here is really the need to prioritize communications and possibly a public information officer in the next budget. If that's something counselor, counselors want, you know, somebody that engages, and I know I'm biased in this because I am a public information officer, but that person then becomes that spokesperson for the police department. They're not a uniformed person. You're not taking away from the response and they're speaking with authority. And the same thing would be true for something like a billing thing, because I know that that is something that our staff takes on as an additional responsibility that maybe shouldn't necessarily live with that individual, not because they aren't skilled with it, but because it's, if I'm, I'm sorry, Kim, I'm putting you on the spot, but I think it's under the clerk's office.
Well, yeah, the press, the press releases them to us and we send them out. We don't prepare the press.
Okay.
That was prepared by the finance department.
Okay, so it's just something to consider, I think, when we're talking about communications and making sure those are clear. It's something that we can, I think, as a body, talk about when the budget comes up too. And is this somebody that we need as a growing city to add to our staff, to ensure that they're engaging on those comments, to ensure that they're speaking with authority for the police department and we're not getting, you know, as you pointed out, another official posting incorrect information on it. Well-meaning, but incorrect.
Absolutely.
And that's, and when that person does that, it's, it's an authority figure that's, that's doing that. So you take that as, as the word, right?
Right. It, it makes us all afraid sometimes too, because we don't want to be wrong and, and then it comes back on us and we were just trying to help.
Well, I, I, question I would have is, what, what is the city's plan currently? If we have an incident that we need to be talking to the press, what is our plan right now? Who, who do we have designated as or what's the chain of command on that so that we don't end up with seven other people talking out of the side of their mouth when we should only have that one? Do, do we have something in place currently?
We, we, I will tell you, we do not formally have anything in place. It would be the department director for the department most impacted. So in the case of a shooting, it would be Frank. In the case of the utility bills, it would be Brandon. It's the finance director. If it's a, a snow event, it's going to be Public Works saying, here's what we can tell you now.
Jason.
Yeah. Whether, whether roads are closed or open or whatever, so.
So maybe we need to take another look at that and have a central hub that everything, information flow goes through so that we can make sure we're speaking with the same voice as a city.
So I have this in my notes to follow up with my staff at our meeting in a couple of weeks, so we'll talk about it.
And, and as a mayoral candidate, and we have Kenneth Jackley here as a mayoral candidate as well, and we have constituents probably coming to you as well and a couple other candidates for, for other positions, folks are coming to, to me and, and asking for increased communication. And I'm asking them, well, what do you mean? And they can't all tell me exactly what they mean, but I can tell you that they're looking for something a little bit more. They're looking for what they used to, what they feel they used to have, which is increased communication coming out of the leadership of, of Lebanon. And I tell you, for me, sometimes I'm afraid to say something because I'm not exactly sure if I'm right, I'm not exactly sure if I'm wrong, I'm thinking about, you know, ramification from it. And I think that some sort of direction into that, into that area probably is-
On, on behalf of the city, I will tell you that, in, in their defense, I, I remember when I first started coming to these meetings and I would be the only person sitting there. And finally, Ken, the mayor, came up and asked me, he says, what are you doing? I said, well, I want to see how the city's run. He said, why? It used to be a lot different. They have come so far in the trans-
We.
Huh?
We.
Yes.
Counselor.
Yeah, we.
Yeah, yeah, include yourself in there.
Yeah.
Oh, God, I'm a politician. The city's come so far-
True.
-from where it used to be that I, I can't really complain. I think that what we're talking about now is just taking the next logical step in the progression that's been going on. Everything used to be very closed and very, and I know Frank used to see him, see the politicians around here, because he's been here longer than me, I think, one of the few. But, I mean, it was the good old boy network. And there were a lot of backroom deal and talk and stuff like that. There wasn't a lot of sharing with the community, but then the community never asked for it. Now the community's asking for it more. And this is the next progressive step.
Absolutely.
It just makes sense.
Absolutely.
The city's come a long way, so. And as far as the social media, Frank can tell you, because I've, I've been through the same thing. I've been to crime scenes and read about them in the paper and wondered what, what the crime scene they were at. It was a great article, except it was factually incorrect.
Right, absolutely. Absolutely. So I, I think that, you know, having, having the conversation and, and is where we need to move forward and, and totally agree, have come a long way and we just continue learning and growing. And my wife Jenny likes to say that positive complaints offer solutions, invent solutions, bring solutions, and solutions are like.
I feel like we kind of went items from council and City Managers' Report all in one, but does anybody else have anything else from council?
I do. And it's already been brought up, but I, I really do want to commend the, the police department and your team, Chief, on, you know, we've had some, some things happen in the community lately, some really big things that, that may have been a lot worse. And you and your team continue to impress me, continue to protect the city the way we would want to be protected. And I know we got a lot of little things to work on, but when the big things happen, you're there and you're representative of our community. I just want to say, thank you. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We'll bring you the cookies later.
Yeah. You need to thank, yeah, you don't, yeah, not necessarily thank me.
Let's clap, baby, all right, all right. You take that back, you take that back.
No, it's, it's the, it's the men and women of the police department that make it happen. And they're the ones that are out there in the trenches, day in and day out. So, you know, make sure you thank the officers and dispatchers and the, the entirety of the police department, because they're all, every single one of them are involved in that. So I just happen to be one of the bigger guys there, so maybe I'm the one that's noticed, I don't know.
Show off tonight.
I, I, any opportunity I get to throw my vest and go out there, I'm like, yeah, all right.
We have one more public comment at the very end and then comments from press. I don't think there's any press here today. Any more additional public comments?
I think I have one.
Sure. Come on up. I'm going to put a little times two on yours, though.
Yeah. So just sitting back there, I, my ears perked up when you mentioned a lien on, due to a sidewalk. Was, was, was that that lady that was in here, so?
Yeah.
Was, was, did that wind up being the best solution?
That is the solution that they chose. I believe that they got bids from several contractors. They got a bid from the city that's just under $4,000. And that was what they chose to, to do, was to have the city crews put that sidewalk in and we'll put a lien on the property and set up time payment agreements with them. And as soon as it's paid off, the lien is released.
Okay, it, it just, that caught my attention and I just, not having any other information, that just sounded like a really unfortunate outcome. You know, I wouldn't want to all of a sudden have a lien on my property. So, yeah, I just wanted some clarification and follow-up as, as to how that turned out.
It, it is the best way for the city to ensure repayment. We're not a bank and it's a cost that a private property owner would ordinarily incur. And so we're, when we do the work, we're kind of quasi-loaning that resource and we need to make sure that we get it paid back so that the rest of the taxpayers in town aren't paying for that. And that's, it is standard practice pretty much everywhere. If I had the sidewalk in front of my house done by the city, I would have a lien placed until I paid it off.
And that's not unusual. When you hire a contractor to do a lot of work on a place, they'll, whether you realize it or not, they'll put a contractor's lien to make sure that they get paid.
Is there an interest rate with that?
I'm sorry?
Is there an interest rate on that?
Um, yes, I believe it's 2% plus Wall Street Journal Prime or Wall Street Journal 10-year note, something like that on the day that the-
It's usually prime plus two or something like that.
Yeah, it's, it's a relatively low interest rate right, right now.
All right, thanks, yeah.
Marcelis, correct? Is that, is that your name, Marcelis?
Yes.
And, and I, I'm with you. You know, we, we heard one side of the story and it was very emotional and, and well-read, so I, I understand how you might feel when you hear that versus having, and you mentioned having all the facts. But thank you for bringing that up. And, and also you are a new member of one of the council meetings, committees, correct?
I've joined the Planning Committee.
Well, well, congratulations. Look forward to, to, you know, hearing more. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. With that, our next scheduled council meeting is October 12th, 5 o'clock. We have a work session before our 6 o'clock regular session and we will go ahead and adjourn at 7:25. Thank you, everybody.
I told mom 7:30.